Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District 6. This is the 25th day of October 2021. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Legions to our Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, welcome, and we call the roll for us, please.
Director Haley.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Mueller.
Present.
Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Solis.
Present.
Director Tally.
Present.
Seven members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. That's gonna get a little, it's gonna take a while to get used to, but thank you again. For those of you just joining us, this is Ms. Lemon's first meeting as our Board Secretary, and we're thankful to have her coming over from the Eden School District. Welcome to District 6, Ms. Lemon. Just a few announcements as we get going tonight. One, just want to remind everyone of all the different ways that parents can engage in this district. There are any number of ways for parents to be involved in what we do here. And we're thankful for the parents who do stay involved. And one of the best ways, if you've been watching meetings or come to meetings often, you know that the District Accountability Meeting or Committee is one of the best ways for parents to be involved. And that is one parent from every school that meets together and they met recently. Ms. Pappas is our liaison from the board that meets with that group. Dr. Pilch often, if not every time, meets with that group. And that's a way for parents to stay involved at that level. There's also school accountability committees, and they do roughly the same thing, but work at schools and they look at the different numbers for schools for testing, for different things that schools are doing. And that's available in every school. There's a school accountability committees. You can check with your principal if you're out there and think, how do we stay better engaged in the district? How do we know what's happening at our school? I mean, there's always PTOs, but those student or their school accountability committees, those are great ways to stay active in what is actually happening at your school. Then at a curriculum level, every curriculum that we have and we have adopted, and we have adopted a lot in the last few years, thanks to that MLO that was passed in 2017. We have had a curriculum refresh and we've been busy adopting new curriculums. Every one of those curriculums is available for the public to see, and that's not just for parents, but that's for anybody who wants to see what is actually happening in the district. We make that available for about a week here at the district office, and people can walk in and check out and see what is in those curriculums. And that is the public's way to engage in that process before it ever comes to the board for adoption. There's also family education meetings. And family education meetings are opportunities to build partnerships with schools and families to increase student achievement. And these workshops provide parents with the information and resources to participate in the educational process and learn strategies for assisting in working with their children at home. And that's a great way for parents to get to better know the system so they can help their individual child. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of the different ways for parents and the community to engage the system. Also, there's one way, and one way that we provide, and I just want to make everybody where really, and this may, hopefully, I'm not leaving out any high schools, but I know that Greeley West High School Student Council is hosting a trick or treat street at Greeley West High School on Wednesday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And all guests are required to wear masks and park and enter on the north side of the campus. But if you are looking for a safe place to find candy for your child, that is Greeley West on the 27th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM is a great way to do that. And that's all the announcements that I have tonight. We are now to the public participation regarding agenda items. And Ms. Lemon, I don't believe we have anybody speaking to us tonight on agenda items. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Well, we'll proceed to our work session report. And Ms. Lemon, will you read our work session report for us, please?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events. Legal counsel Nathan Fall discussed legislative priorities. The board debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We're now to our superintendent's report. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I was going to mention District Accountability Committee, so I'll just talk about it briefly. I did have the opportunity to be with that group of parents and community members last week. It's always a pleasure to be with them. I don't know that we've been in person. Well, they were in person last month, but I don't think they'd been in person for quite some time before that. They did do a combination of in-person and Zoom, and it actually worked really well, thanks to Ms. Richards and Dr. Dattery. But I was able to meet with them and give them an update, share the latest Innovation 2030 brochure, and then to share our video that's the update on the bond and the mill levy override. And then we opened it up to questions and just took general questions and comments from the parents and community members there. So they're a tremendous group. I know, Ms. Mueller, you have to be missing them since you gave out that rule to Ms. Pappas. But always a pleasure to be with them, and you're right, I am usually with them each meeting, each month. I also want to just say tonight that we do have on the agenda an update on that Innovation 2030 launch that was held here at Pooter-Lucrent Center, so I'll update you on that later this evening. This is our last full board meeting for board members, Mr. Haley and Ms. Solis, and they've had a significant impact on District 6 over the past eight years of their service. We do plan on honoring our outgoing board members prior to our next board meeting on November 8th at 5:00 PM here at the district building in the big room out here. So I would invite the public to join us in honoring outgoing board members on November 8th at 5:00 PM. Also, on November 8th, at our regular board meeting, we will swear in new board members that evening during the November 8th Board of Education meeting. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next item on the agenda is actually to approve the agenda, and so we will need a motion to do that.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Director Haley.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Mueller.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Solis.
Aye.
Director Tally.
Aye.
Seven members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. That's gonna get a little, it's gonna take a while to get used to, but thank you again. For those of you just joining us, this is Ms. Lemon's first meeting as our Board Secretary, and we're thankful to have her coming over from the Eden School District. Welcome to District 6, Ms. Lemon. Just a few announcements as we get going tonight. One, just want to remind everyone of all the different ways that parents can engage in this district. There are any number of ways for parents to be involved in what we do here. And we're thankful for the parents who do stay involved. And one of the best ways, if you've been watching meetings or come to meetings often, you know that the District Accountability Meeting or Committee is one of the best ways for parents to be involved. And that is one parent from every school that meets together and they met recently. Ms. Pappas is our liaison from the board that meets with that group. Dr. Pilch often, if not every time, meets with that group. And that's a way for parents to stay involved at that level. There's also school accountability committees, and they do roughly the same thing, but work at schools and they look at the different numbers for schools for testing, for different things that schools are doing. And that's available in every school. There's a school accountability committees. You can check with your principal if you're out there and think, how do we stay better engaged in the district? How do we know what's happening at our school? I mean, there's always PTOs, but those student or their school accountability committees, those are great ways to stay active in what is actually happening at your school. Then at a curriculum level, every curriculum that we have and we have adopted, and we have adopted a lot in the last few years, thanks to that MLO that was passed in 2017. We have had a curriculum refresh and we've been busy adopting new curriculums. Every one of those curriculums is available for the public to see, and that's not just for parents, but that's for anybody who wants to see what is actually happening in the district. We make that available for about a week here at the district office, and people can walk in and check out and see what is in those curriculums. And that is the public's way to engage in that process before it ever comes to the board for adoption. There's also family education meetings. And family education meetings are opportunities to build partnerships with schools and families to increase student achievement. And these workshops provide parents with the information and resources to participate in the educational process and learn strategies for assisting in working with their children at home. And that's a great way for parents to get to better know the system so they can help their individual child. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of the different ways for parents and the community to engage the system. Also, there's one way, and one way that we provide, and I just want to make everybody where really, and this may, hopefully, I'm not leaving out any high schools, but I know that Greeley West High School Student Council is hosting a trick or treat street at Greeley West High School on Wednesday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And all guests are required to wear masks and park and enter on the north side of the campus. But if you are looking for a safe place to find candy for your child, that is Greeley West on the 27th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM is a great way to do that. And that's all the announcements that I have tonight. We are now to the public participation regarding agenda items. And Ms. Lemon, I don't believe we have anybody speaking to us tonight on agenda items. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Well, we'll proceed to our work session report. And Ms. Lemon, will you read our work session report for us, please?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events. Legal counsel Nathan Fall discussed legislative priorities. The board debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We're now to our superintendent's report. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I was going to mention District Accountability Committee, so I'll just talk about it briefly. I did have the opportunity to be with that group of parents and community members last week. It's always a pleasure to be with them. I don't know that we've been in person. Well, they were in person last month, but I don't think they'd been in person for quite some time before that. They did do a combination of in-person and Zoom, and it actually worked really well, thanks to Ms. Richards and Dr. Dattery. But I was able to meet with them and give them an update, share the latest Innovation 2030 brochure, and then to share our video that's the update on the bond and the mill levy override. And then we opened it up to questions and just took general questions and comments from the parents and community members there. So they're a tremendous group. I know, Ms. Mueller, you have to be missing them since you gave out that rule to Ms. Pappas. But always a pleasure to be with them, and you're right, I am usually with them each meeting, each month. I also want to just say tonight that we do have on the agenda an update on that Innovation 2030 launch that was held here at Pooter-Lucrent Center, so I'll update you on that later this evening. This is our last full board meeting for board members, Mr. Haley and Ms. Solis, and they've had a significant impact on District 6 over the past eight years of their service. We do plan on honoring our outgoing board members prior to our next board meeting on November 8th at 5:00 PM here at the district building in the big room out here. So I would invite the public to join us in honoring outgoing board members on November 8th at 5:00 PM. Also, on November 8th, at our regular board meeting, we will swear in new board members that evening during the November 8th Board of Education meeting. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next item on the agenda is actually to approve the agenda, and so we will need a motion to do that.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Director Haley.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Mueller.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Solis.
Aye.
Director Tally.
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item is our consent agenda that we need to pass, and that will need a motion also.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you. We need discussion on the consent agenda. Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Director Haley.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Mueller.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Solis.
Aye.
Director Tally.
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item is our Greeley Education Association Starfish Award. And so, I want to invite Ms. Andy Lee to come forward to recognize one of our outstanding staff.
Let's make sure I get close enough this time because I have a bad habit of that. Can everybody hear me? Okay. I want to introduce you to Susan Knackel, and she is from Billy Martinez. She's a 5th grade teacher, and I had the privilege and the pleasure of watching her teach math, which honestly, everybody is like kind of rolling their eyes right now mentally, and I understand that. Except, we have done a new math curriculum, and it's been a challenging one. But the really interesting thing, having been able to observe this, is that we've switched the cognitive load from the educator to the student. It takes a lot of time. It is definitely not a perfect process. But I had the opportunity of being able to watch Susan and her students actually talk about area, do a proportion of area, talk about how to compare, like when you have those two boxes down and four boxes across in this bigger area, how to actually find what the area is, way beyond what I did. And probably the most brilliant thing I saw was one of her students came up, and I did figure out the right answer eventually, but it was a very complicated, lengthy, painfully, brain-hurting process. But I did it, and the 5th graders were proud of me. But she came up with this brilliant way that I never would have thought of. So I asked the student, who was very embarrassed about actually sharing her thinking in front of everybody, very shy young lady, I'm like, if you show me yours, can I show you mine? She's like going, yeah. And so she showed me her thinking, and Susan, bless her heart, is a great educator that she was. She let this happen, and I showed her mine, and the kids are like going, "Hats, what? Why didn't you just do it this way?" And we talked about how there are multiple right ways to coming to a solution, but how important it is to explain our thinking, because just seeing a number, just seeing the answer isn't enough to make sure that I, as the 50-year-old walking into the classroom, can actually understand what's going on. And probably the most interesting one was about the square units. And so, we forgot about the square units, and I was the only one doing the thumbs down because I did know that areas require square units. And they wouldn't tell me what SQ meant, so finally I'm like, that means Sasquatch units, right? Everybody giggled, and Susan laughed, and we had actually a chance to have students explain to me why those words were important. Not the fact that we missed them on the answer, but why they were important. And that's the biggest difference, and that is the blessing that I got to see in Susan's class, is that we're giving students chances to think. All students get a chance to think. They're talking to their partners, they're working out different ways. And if you have a different way of doing things, that's not necessarily bad, but if you can't explain it, that's where the concern comes in. So I just wanted to celebrate Susan. I wanted to celebrate her ability to do math. Her first thing to me was, you can come watch me in the math curriculum, but I'm not very strong at it. And I got to tell you, if that's your weak subject, we are one lucky school district. So anyway, this is Susan, and I'm glad to be able to present her to you.
Thank you, Ms. Ladies. Oh, hang on just a second. I think we do might have a question or a comment for you, Susan. So, Ms. Pappas.
Well, it is kind of a comment. So I spent 16 years teaching 5th grade at Billy Martinez, and so I appreciate you being here tonight. I thank you for all you do. And I think about when I started teaching 5th grade back in 19 something 83-ish. You know, we literally, there was one way to do it, and it was very rote, and you do it my way. And so, I'm just so grateful that we've changed that way of thinking in mathematics, and I just want to thank you for that. I know the new math curriculum, you know, with everything else you have going on. So I just, I really appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is a proclamation for Education Support Professionals Day. And this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 adopts the proclamation declaring November 17th, 2021, Education Support Professionals Day.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, Mr. Tally, would you like to read that proclamation for us?
Yes. Proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6, Education Support Professionals Day, November 17th, 2021. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas education support professionals are an integral part of the education process. And whereas education support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students. And whereas education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. Now therefore, I, Michael Matthews, serving as the President of Greeley Evans School District 6 Board of Education, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 17th, 2021, as National Education Support Professionals Day. I urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of education support professionals in our public schools.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you. We need discussion on the consent agenda. Hearing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Solis?
Aye.
Director Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item is our Greeley Education Association Starfish Award. And so, I want to invite Ms. Andy Lee to come forward to recognize one of our outstanding staff.
Let's make sure I get close enough this time because I have a bad habit of that. Can everybody hear me? Okay. I want to introduce you to Susan Knackel, and she is from Billy Martinez. She's a 5th grade teacher, and I had the privilege and the pleasure of watching her teach math, which honestly, everybody is kind of rolling their eyes right now mentally, and I understand that. Except, we have done a new math curriculum, and it's been a challenging one. But the really interesting thing, having been able to observe this, is that we've switched the cognitive load from the educator to the student. It takes a lot of time. It is definitely not a perfect process, but I had the opportunity of being able to watch Susan and her students actually talk about area, do a proportion of area, talk about how to compare, like when you have those two boxes down and four boxes across in this bigger area, how to actually find what the area is, way beyond what I did. And probably the most brilliant thing I saw was one of her students came up, and I did figure out the right answer eventually, but it was a very complicated, lengthy, painfully, brain-hurting process. But I did it, and the 5th graders were proud of me. But she came up with this brilliant way that I never would have thought of. So I asked the student, who was very embarrassed about actually sharing her thinking in front of everybody, very shy young lady, I'm like, if you show me yours, can I show you mine? She's like going, yeah. And so she showed me her thinking, and Susan, bless her heart, is a great educator that she was, she let this happen, and I showed her mine, and the kids are like going, hats, what? Why didn't you just do it this way? And we talked about how there are multiple right ways to coming to a solution, but how important it is to explain our thinking, because just seeing a number, just seeing the answer, isn't enough to make sure that I, as the 50-year-old walking into the classroom, can actually understand what's going on. And probably the most interesting one was about the square units. And so, we forgot about the square units, and I was the only one doing the thumbs down because I did know that areas required square units. And they wouldn't tell me what SQ meant, so finally I'm like, that means Sasquatch units, right? Everybody giggled, and Susan laughed, and we had actually a chance to have students explain to me why those words were important, not the fact that we missed them on the answer, but why they were important. And that's the biggest difference, and that is the blessing that I got to see in Susan's class, is that we're giving students chances to think. All students get a chance to think. They're talking to their partners, they're working out different ways, and if you have a different way of doing things, that's not necessarily bad, but if you can't explain it, that's where the concern comes in. So I just wanted to celebrate Susan. I wanted to celebrate her ability to do math. Her first thing to me was, you can come watch me in the math curriculum, but I'm not very strong at it. And I got to tell you, if that's your weak subject, we are one lucky school district. So anyway, this is Susan, and I'm glad to be able to present it to you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Oh, hang on just a second. I think we do might have a question or a comment for you, Susan. So, Ms. Pappas?
Well, it is kind of a comment. So I spent 16 years teaching 5th grade at Billy Martinez, and so I appreciate you being here tonight. I thank you for all you do. And I think about when I started teaching 5th grade back in 19 something 83-ish. You know, we literally, there was one way to do it, and it was very rote, and you do it my way, and so I'm just so grateful that we've changed that way of thinking in mathematics, and I just want to thank you for that. I know the new math curriculum, you know, with everything else you have going on, so I just, I really appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is a proclamation for Education Support Professionals Day, and this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 adopts the proclamation declaring November 17th, 2021, Education Support Professionals Day.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, Mr. Tally, would you like to read that proclamation for us?
Yes. Proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6, Education Support Professionals Day, November 17th, 2021. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas education support professionals are an integral part of the education process. And whereas education support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students. And whereas education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. Now therefore, I, Michael Matthews, serving as the President of Greeley-Evan School District 6 Board of Education, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 17th, 2021, as National Education Support Professionals Day. I urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of education support professionals in our public schools. Given under my hand and the executive seal of the Weld County School District 6, this 25th day of October, 2021, Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Before we open this up for board members to comment, Dr. Pilch, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, President Matthews. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, we could not do the work we do in District 6 without every single employee, and often it's our classified employees, who are, many of them are paraprofessionals, who really, really do take care of the day-to-day operations of our school, without a doubt. And we have Sasha Calhoun, who is the President of the Classified Council here with us tonight, to accept this proclamation after she hears your comments. Thanks for being here, Sasha.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. I think we're getting some comments from board members. Mr. Hayfley?
I'd like to thank Sasha. When you go at Greeley West, she bleeds blue and gold. She was a student there. She now runs the whole building. People think it's Mr. Krantz, but in reality, it's Mrs. Calhoun, and that's common knowledge. So to you and all the other people who make a difference in our district, we greatly appreciate it, and thanks for all you do.
Mr. Hayfley? Ms. Mueller?
So, as a former PTO president and parent that was regularly depending upon our professionals in the building outside of teachers and administrators, I too want to thank all the professionals that help support our students, help support teachers and staff, and especially help support parents. And Sasha was one of those people when my kids were at Greeley West High School, so thank you for being here, Sasha. I want to say that schools really do not run in a vacuum. There are a lot of people behind the scenes with lots of activities daily to make sure our students are safe, make sure that they know where they need to go, make sure they get registered for classes, make sure that they get fed well, and that their school buildings are clean. So I just want to appreciate everybody in the classified areas for their work.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller.
I would just add that, you know, if you don't think our secretaries, and our bus drivers, and our custodians, and our maintenance employees, and our food service personnel, and all these different people, if you don't think they do what they do because they love kids, you just haven't, you haven't been in a school, and you haven't watched what they do and why they do it, and how much our custodians care about our kids, and how much those food service workers, how many of them know every kid that goes through that line, the dedication of our bus drivers. They could make a lot more money doing what they do someplace else, but they do what they do here because of their great love for children, and so it is fantastic that we get to honor them tonight and recognize their incredible contributions to the district. And so, with that, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Solis?
Aye.
Director Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Ms. Calhoun, I am signing, and I have something to present to you. And so, Dr. Pilch, I believe this one's yours, and I will hand it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. And I think Ms. Myers is going to help me with the slides on this, as we give you an update on Innovation 2030. So several of you were able to be with us out at the Pooter Learning Center for the Action Team launch. We brought together over 150 or so folks. We had students there, we had teachers, we had parents, community members, so it was really quite exciting. Those folks will all serve on action teams across the strategic plan to ensure that we implement the work we promised we would implement. You can go ahead to the next slide, Teresa, please. So we came together on October 13th with that large group of folks out at the Pooter Learning Center. It proved to be a nice venue for that. We were able to open the garage doors and spread out a little bit and let some people get outside and some people to work inside. What we did that evening, first, we just thanked them. We thanked them for all the work they have done getting us to this point. So you all may recall a session last spring on Zoom where we had over 200 community and staff and students and parent participants. Out of that session came over 70 pages of feedback that we then took back to the steering committee and back to our cabinet and began to distill that information down to get to the initial brochure for Innovation 2030. We reviewed with the teams out there that day, the district mission and the vision, and I emphasized that the big change we've seen in the mission from the previous I-2020 was the shift in having that language in there that says we're preparing students to be college and career-ready. We talk about that all the time. It is the work we do, and we felt like it was important to, you all felt like it was important to put it there on the mission and vision. I also reminded folks out there that it is actually the Board of Education who adopts the mission and vision and values of the district, that this came, we took community feedback and staff feedback to get to these pieces, but this is actually the big part of the document that is actually board-adopted. And so you see your values there, you know what they are, we talk about them frequently. Also adopted by the Board of Education, as I shared that day, is our four big focus areas. These did not change in terms of the title from Innovation 2020, but the language inside of those, some of that language did change as we gathered feedback from the community, from our district leadership team, and from you all as school board members. So we thought it was important out there that evening just to remind all of the action team members of these big four focus areas that the board had adopted. And then we reviewed the timeline with the team as well. It's just a good little reminder, I think, for all of us on the steps that we've taken as we've gone through this process. The work really began a year and a half ago, just right before we were sent home for COVID. We were able to have that big visioning session with the community member out at Riverside Library, and we had over 170 or so folks there that day. I think, I'll just remind you, I'm trying to take you back in time. I think one of the most powerful things that day was actually hearing the voices of our students and having students actually participate in the circles with staff and community members was really powerful. We then came to the board a year ago, May, and you all approved the new mission, vision, values, and beliefs that you just saw in the slides. Then we began to draft the steering committees, or we brought together the steering committee and began to draft our draft plans that go behind all of this work that we've been doing with the community. In January, we took some of that draft plan then back out to you all, for you all to give us feedback. We took it to our district leadership team for feedback, which then prepared us for that big meeting in February that I spoke of earlier, where we had almost 200 people involved and were able to gather 70 pages of input on the draft that we had so far. So you might wonder, how do you take 70 pages of input and make some sense out of it? So what we actually did is our steering committee, our cabinet-level executive team, we went through and we identified, you know, the big themes that were popping out, then we chunked that information together, and then Ms. Crane, prior to her leaving us to go to her new job, Ms. Crane was able to then put the pieces that were common themes throughout into one section at a time, and then to begin to build the backend of this with that community input. So that work really took us from February to this past May, where we actually developed that brochure, or, excuse me, this past August, where we launched the brochure, the new Innovation 2030 brochure. And what you see in that brochure looks a little different than the past brochure, which I'll get into here in just a moment, as I walk you through that, and then finally the launch here earlier this month. So this thing is alive and well now, Innovation 2030. But what you see that's different this time around from last time is actually in that brochure, you see the focus areas still, the goals, the objectives, and then you begin to see the strategies. And then the actions, or the outcomes and measures, that is work of these action teams and the work that the action teams actually began talking about there that evening out at the Pooter Learning Center. So next steps, we will continue our quarterly steering committee meetings. So this is the big oversight committee that makes sure we keep this whole thing moving. And then we've asked each action team, those folks that were there at the Pooter Learning Center, each of them serve on at least one action team, we've asked them to hold at least one meeting per quarter. So between now and the end of December, they have to have had their first meeting, and they have to be prepared to give us the update on that first meeting. And then we'll continue to give you updates as Board of Education members. I'll have some of that for you at CASB, when we get down to CASB in December. And then we've also begun to reconstruct the data dashboard on the website, so you'll want to check that out. The data dashboard will be a little bit more nimble than last time around. We've got the ability to drill down into the data a little bit more, so we can actually show what we're measuring and how we're measuring it and what the progress is along the way. And then we'll bring the whole full team back together in late April of '22. That'll be the team that was there with you all at the Pooter Learning Center. We'll all come back together and we'll do the big community meeting again, where each team can give an update on the progress that is made this school year. So one of the things that we really had to emphasize with our folks there the other night was all of this doesn't happen in the first year. This plan is called Innovation 2030 for a reason. Now, this work is expected to be implemented and completed before 2030, but as much as that plan has outlined and identified that we need to do here to meet the needs of our community, it's going to take us several years to do that. And so we asked the teams to really think about, how do you pace this work out so it actually happens and gets done? And I think you all know the value of strategic planning. You've watched our graduation rate increase dramatically, our dropout rate decrease significantly. You've seen us take, going from 14 schools that were either on turnaround or priority improvement, down to two. So you know that strategic planning matters, and you know that having a clear vision for how you implement that plan is critical to the success of the school district. I'll just say that I, more than ever, have I valued our strategic plan. When it came time for us to write a multi-year plan for the spending of those COVID relief dollars, the ESSR dollars, we were able to write that plan directly from the work we had done developing this Innovation 2030, the first steps of this. So we'd already heard from our community, we'd heard from our staff, we'd heard from our students, we'd heard from our administrators on what we needed to do next, and because we had that information, we were able to write that plan, submit that plan, and have dollars already flowing into District 6. I have colleagues in other districts who have yet to submit their plan. So we are far ahead on the work that needs to be done to make up for learning loss and to push kids up and catch kids up and to support our teachers and families to do that work, because we have a strategic plan. It just really, really matters, and I want to thank all of you for your work that you've done on that. It might be a good time to especially thank Mr. Hayfley, Ms. Solis, who were original board members who hired me, and I remember in the interview, I was asked the question about strategic planning, because when I came in, you all had about seven pages of notes and things toward a strategic plan, but we were able to come together there in the first 18 months or so, and Ms. Pappas came on the board right after that and developed this strategic plan that we've all known as Innovation 2020. And it has, because of that, we have significantly moved this system. So excited about Innovation 2030, and again, just thank you to all of you for your commitment to it. You know that there'll be regular updates that we will continue to bring forward to you all in the coming board meetings. I think there's an update in the next board meeting related to one of the goal areas of Innovation 2030. So thank you, and I'm happy to take questions if you have some.
I bet you will.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Ms. Solis?
So I don't have any questions. I think sometimes community members don't understand exactly how some of the board work works. And when we did the strategic plan, it was all of us coming together, talking about our experiences in District 6, what we've heard from community, and we all put in our ideas of how to move the district forward, and we worked on a vision, we worked on a mission, and really dug deep on the work that we wanted to see achieved in the district. When I first got on the school board, we had numerous schools on watch. Our dropout rate was high, our graduation rate was not where we wanted it to be, and we had a really bad reputation here. And when we came on and we did this work, a lot of it was to turn this district around to not only improve our community relationships with our businesses, because we know that when a business wants to start a business in a community, or a family wants to move, one of the first places they look is the success of that school district. What is their public school system like? And we know this. And so it was a lot of work to mend relationships, work with our, you know, our teachers and our staff to really change our reputation, change how we did work, and that's how we developed the strategic plan. So a lot of the conversation and the back and forth really happened during that time. So once that strategic plan is made, then everything that you guys do as administration falls within that strategic plan. It has to plug in there, not only as an outcome, but then break it down as to how do we get that outcome, which holds us accountable, is very transparent, and those were two things that we heard from a lot of community members. They wanted transparency, and they wanted to make sure that those outcomes actually happened. What we've had experience before with other strategic plans with other boards is you do all this work, and it ends up in a document, and no one pulls the document out after that. What we wanted was something that was workable, that we would go through all of our processes. Do they work? Do they not work? Do we need to get rid of it? Do we need to bring in something new? Do we need to tweak it? So all of that work has been done over these last eight years. So to see where we were before to where we are now has achieved a lot of those goals that we set when we first got on this board. And I think sometimes people misunderstand, when we all vote seven zero, it's because we've already done this strategic plan, and all the stuff that we are voting on has to align with that strategic plan, which it does. And so when we come through and we do a vote, it's like, this is the work that we've been doing. We've talked about this, we went over it, we've discussed it, and so by the time we get to this point, the work has been done. So I think sometimes community members don't understand how much work goes on behind the scenes as far as we've had those discussions, we've reached out to community, and I don't think I ever saw a time that we did more work with our community than we did when we started changing things. I mean, even in hiring you, Dr. Pilch, that is a board thing to do, to hire the superintendent. But we decided to do it different, and we had community groups put together, they interviewed everybody, and we picked you as a community. For as much as we'd like to take all the credit, we as a community did that. And I think that's where a lot of the buy-in came in, when it came to the other work, like an MLO and a bond. We got that support because we had included the community, and all the work that we do goes into that strategic plan, and these great sessions that you've put together, again, have been with community. So we've brought them in, talked about things that they see as, you know, a business owner, as a parent, as a community member, and really made sure that we listened to what they had to say. So I just think the strategic plan really sets a tone. There were things that weren't in place when I first got on the board, that, you know, whether it was an intergovernmental agreement, we didn't have that in place. We didn't have a big plan on, okay, where are we going to build a new school? We're in the process of building a new school. Obviously, our community has gotten bigger. All of those things have been achieved under you and the work that you've done with your staff and your experience coming in and making sure that we had this foresight as a district to make sure we're going in the right direction. So I just really thank the community, I thank our board members, and I thank you, Dr. Pilch. You brought in a lot of direction when it came to the stuff that wasn't there in place and really helped us move that forward. So I just commend everybody on this Innovation 2030. I apologize for not being able to be at that meeting, I was still at work, but such great work that lays out a plan for future plans and to make sure that we keep going in the right direction and that we are the district that other communities continue to look at. I mean, you do so many presentations at different places because they want to know how we did it here. And so I just want to thank everybody for their hard work on this 2030 plan.
I don't see any other comments or questions from board members, so I'll just close with this. One of the things a strategic plan guide One of the things a strategic plan guides is is the next strategic plan. And and we had a lot easier time, the group of us that have put this I-2030 together because of the work that was done for for I-2020 and and the good work that was done for I-2020. And the fact is, I mean, had you not done the work, you know, a number of us wouldn't be here. You know, when I look at some of these values and I see we build positive relationships with students, families, and communities, you know, if you, Ms. Solis and Mr. Hayfley, if you guys had not done that work, you know, I don't know that people like Mr. Tally and Ms. Mash and I and Ms. Mueller, who are all parents of District 6 students, or at least in Ms. Mueller's case, recent recent parent of a District 6 student, you know, I don't know that that we would be here. I mean, there was a change that happened when when this strategic plan was 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 implemented, I-2020. And certainly, Dr. Pilch, you deserve the credit for for implementation. And as you said, so many just sit on a shelf. You do the work and then it sits there. But I mean, we come back to these values. I don't know that there's a board meeting, a presentation that we don't we don't see these values, that we don't see what our priorities are, that we and we identify which one it is. When it comes time to to spending money and going out for a bond issue or MLO, you can see exactly what we were targeting in our values. How much of our bond and MLO has been sent to ensure safe, secure, healthy schools? How much of the MLO went to commit to hiring and retaining quality staff and in advancing the the salaries or the the wages of our classified staff that we just honored? How much has has gone into opportunity and choice for parents? In terms of when we when we build a new school, it's it's a different school. It's an engineering school that we have STEM schools and art schools, and and now we have one more choice available for for our parents. And so again, just as we as we launch this Innovation 2030, I just want to celebrate all the all the good that's come out of I-2020 and all the work that went into that by, again, not only you guys, but but that the previous board and Dr. Pilch, you and your administration. So thank you. Ms. Lemon. Oh, wait, there's no vote, sorry. I'm getting better. It used to be that I would forget the vote. Now I'm trying to have votes when we don't when we don't even need the votes, so. Our next item is to cancel the November 22 board meeting as well as the December 27 board meeting. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 cancels the Board of Education meeting scheduled for November 22, 2021, and December 27, 2021.
Second. Thank you both. Any discussion on on this motion? Does anybody want to go to a board meeting two days after Christmas? All right, not seeing any discussion. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a board board vote, please?
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Solis?
Aye.
Director Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item is revisions to Policy AC Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity. This is also an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the revisions revisions to Policy AC Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, and for anybody watching, you know that we we do this pretty much every board meeting where we update policies. And those are generally to to bring policies in line with some some new law that the legislature has passed, or sometimes just cleaning up language, changing some musts to shalls and shalls to musts and some important things like that. And and this one, as I read over it, looked to be something of that nature. Dr. Pilch, was there anything you wanted to say about this one before we before we voted on it?
I'll just add, President Matthews, that with the exception of the policy revision around compensation of board members, all the rest of the policies that that we're looking at tonight are all related to the same federal and state legislation around. And it's really just language in the policy, not substantive changes at all.
All right. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Solis?
Aye.
Director Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item is revisions to Policy BID-BIE School Board Member Compensation Expenses, Insurance, and Liability. And this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the revisions to Policy BID-BIE School Board Member Compensation Expenses, Insurance, Liability as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I do believe this was the one that you were mentioning, was it?
Correct. And we've discussed this policy more than once in work session around does the board want to to pay the board or not? And as you all know, the current board would be making the decision for future boards. And I and I think that I hope we've struck the tone that the board would hope to see in the policy in relation to the conversations we've had in work session.
Any questions from board members, comments? Dr. Pilch, I had one just it it looks like in the policy changes just that we are trying to to leave the door open for right now, we don't feel like there's a need to to pay board members, but that that may change in the future. And it seems like we the policy leaves the door open for that. Was that the intent?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Ms. Mueller.
And just refresh my memory. This is in response to the Colorado Legislature voting that this was a they opened the door for this, is that correct?
Yes, correct, yes.
I don't see any other questions or comments. So Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Solis?
Aye.
Director Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item is revisions to G Personnel Policies, and this is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the revisions to G Personnel Policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any questions or comments for board members on this one? Mr. Tally?
I have a question, Dr. Pilch. It says on here after the investigation that the matter shall be reported to the Board of Education, and that is redlined?
So you're looking at GBA, which one are you looking at?
GBEC, sorry. Alcohol and drug-free workplace.
Yeah. Yes, so, yes, that's correct. We we would be deleting that language from the policy. And be so, and I'll tell you, I mean, it is not unusual for us to have employees who are put on leave and then investigated. And so I think in a district as large as ours, that's not necessary information to be sharing every time we do an investigation and put somebody on leave and then share that detail with you all around that decision. And so as we looked at this with legal counsel and with our executive team, we even though CASB was recommending that it be reported to the board, I think it's really important to remember that many of these policies are written for very small school districts where boards of education do a lot of the work of the superintendent. I mean, they have they have to because there's not enough staff to do that. But in in our case and in the case of other large districts, my recommendation would be that we strike that language.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a board vote, please?
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Solis?
Aye.
Director Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item is revisions to J Student Policies, and this is also an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the revisions to J Student Policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion or question from board members on this one? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Solis?
Aye.
Director Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Our next item is revisions to Policy LBD Relations with District Charter Schools, and this one is an action item also.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the revisions to Policy LBD Relations with District Charter Schools.
Second.
Thank you both. Any question or comment from board members on this one?
I have one question.
Mr. Tally.
Dr. Pilch, could you just so with when we change our policy, does the do the charter schools have to change their policy? Or do they automatically fall under ours? Because we don't govern them, correct?
We do not directly govern the charter schools, that's absolutely correct. They do have to follow our policy unless they have waived out of our policy, which is very typical for the charter schools to waive out of District 6 policy. They do have to follow federal and state law. So if if there is something that is required in policy, but they choose to waive out of our board policy, then they would have to write their own policy that actually follows that federal law or state law. But you're you're absolutely correct that we do not directly govern the charter schools. The charter school boards govern themselves.
Thank you.
Ms. Solis, did you have a question?
I know, I was just going to ask a clarification about them having their own board. So she clarified that, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from board members? Not seeing any, Ms. Lemon.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Solis?
Aye.
Director Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Final item is our public participation of non-agenda items. And this earlier in the evening, the board dedicated the time to hear from the community about topics relating to the agenda items for tonight's meeting. This portion of the agenda provides the community an opportunity to present brief comments or pose questions to the board on other items relating to Greeley-Evan's School District 6. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the board secretary, not to individual board members. The board typically does not engage in discussion or provide any immediate feedback or response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect and expects all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers will be heard in the order they signed up to speak, and comments are limited to two minutes. If more than one person wishes to speak on the same topic, please focus comments on providing only new information and not repeating views already expressed by other speakers. Thank you in advance for your participation and let's see who we have first. Our first speaker tonight is Angelica Weiss, a resident of District 6, wanting to speak on current events. So thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Weiss, and you will have two minutes.
On September 29, the National School Board Association wrote a letter to our President Biden calling all parents who speak out at school board meetings domestic terrorists. They're asking for FBI involvement in their school board meetings. And I would like to ask you guys how you feel about such strong language being used against the parents who come here to the meetings. But your actions have already answered that question. This board wasted no time to jump on that bandwagon. You guys quickly took the opportunity to request bulletproof glass and more police presence at these meetings. That's very disturbing, bulletproof glass, really? You know full well that every single person in this room is here because they care about their community and about their children, and nobody wishes anybody any harm. That's just ridiculous. The National School Board Association has since then apologized publicly for this letter stating that there is no justification, that's their words, for the language that they included in that letter. So it's only fair that I think that we give you guys the same opportunity to apologize for actions like that. No. So you think requesting bulletproof glass is reasonable use of our money? Okay. It is evidence that this board's objective is to remove parents from their children's education, using every means possible by intimidating us, using tactics like this, putting up glass, hoping maybe some of us won't come and speak anymore. I don't know. I look forward to the election, and I hope that the school board that's elected in is eager to listen to our thoughts, our concerns. And I know that the people who are running Sullivan, Norwood, Bentley, Galard, they all are eager to listen to us, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Our next speaker is Ms. Bobby Schilling. She is a resident of District 6, here to speak in favor of candidates. Ms. Schilling, you'll have two minutes.
Okay. Can you hear me good? It's hard to talk on this thing. My name is Bobby Schilling, I'm a member of this community. I thank you for having me this evening. I could stand to appear like I have a few other times and continue to show you study after study and cite medical advice from doctor after doctor regarding the harm in masking our children. But instead, why haven't we put that proof against you? You guys are the ones mandating this mask requirement. We haven't asked for any of that from you. Why isn't the burden of proof put on you? I would like to know, where are the case studies showing how children are thriving in schools with masks on? Where are the reports showing that kids are at such high risk for COVID that masking them their entire school day is needed? I'm not asking for a blanket statement, I'm not asking for opinions. But I want to know how significantly it assists keeping our kids healthy and virus-free. You don't have a health board or other entity in the county, you can point the finger out, which is requiring that you implement this mask mandate. Our health board is this county, in this county, is our county commissioners. And I do not believe a single one agrees with you taking parent choice out of this decision. This district's test scores have plummeted in the last few years. I compared on NIEC, Windsor School District versus Weld because it's very equal in ratios, 18 to 1 for teacher for student. I don't know if you realize this, but they're showing that 35% reading proficiency among our district children compared to Windsor's at 56% reading proficiency. Ours in math is 22%, while theirs is 41% proficiency. So what I suggest, and I believe you need to do, is maybe focus that all of this attention on health protocols, masking, vaccinations, testing, turn all of that focus on what you really should be doing. Because right now, you're failing our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schilling. Well, that is all the business that we have tonight. Again, we thank you for being here, thank you for those who are watching online. We appreciate your involvement as well. Just a reminder that Greeley West on the 26th is going to be having a trunker, is it a truck or treat? I see Sasha, she's she's nodding along with me, is that? Say again? Trick or treat, oh, the 27th, sorry, on the 27th, Trick Street at Greeley West. That's from, I think, 5 to 7, again, all right. Thank you, everyone, have a great night, this meeting is adjourned.